Twenty-three to order. If you would stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kerry, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Allenbos?
Present.
Ingles?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here. This time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented.
I will make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Councilmember Allenbos?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk, that would be greatly appreciated, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, council. Mayor, my name's Randy. Good evening. Okay, just a couple of things I want to touch on, and especially schedule a public hearing for the physical capital improvement programs that are going to be coming up here, and then we knew that these were going to be coming up here shortly here, and along with that is all the raises for employees, et cetera. Couple other things is all the city services, such as water, wastewater, utilities and that, and I've noticed that in the paper that we've had requests for proposals for a couple of companies to study, you know, the discharge from the manufacturers, so... but over the years, the city has been pretty stringent on compliance of that, but for many years, we know what has been happening to the discharge from the plants, and a lot of violations, same companies are violating their permits, their IPP permits, industrial pre-treatment permits, and along with that, you know, that puts a tremendous strain on the city of Cadillac's wastewater treatment plant, and again, with the capital improvement budget, et cetera. So I'm going to come back on to the citizens of Cadillac with water increases, we've done water rate studies, et cetera, and that will probably be coming at us at the next meeting, so that's why I just wanted to show up and express my opinion that we got to be very stringent, especially on this pollution. I'm not going to name any of the names of these companies, they're, you know, public notice in the paper there. So, and along with that, with, again, with special interest groups, et cetera, I would like for the citizens of Cadillac to see, you know, even with the marijuana money starting to come in, flowing in now, pretty good deal, you know, the citizens of Cadillac, we can see residential tax declines, et cetera, and probably my three minutes is almost up on this, Mayor. And, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move forward to the approval of the consent agenda.
Sorry.
Sure.
That was the end of it.
Okay, go ahead.
Good day, Mayor and council. My name is Mark Bedrosian. I'm a former homeowner and resident of Cadillac, although I've disowned my house, I don't live here anymore. I am here to present alarming evidence of criminal sexual conduct perpetrated by Cadillac police officer Brandon Otto Grum, as well as administrative and procedural misconduct by Director Adam Abjetka, as well as other senior officers. In my hand, I have evidence of these accusations in the form of Officer Grum's sworn under oath testimony during an FOC case, as well as supporting evidence substantiating these claims. Officer Brandon Otto Grum did conduct and maintain a sexual relationship by use of his position and influence as a police officer with the victim of an alleged crime. This occurred in a case that he was personally involved with in his capacity as a police officer, and was conducted while the case was ongoing. In addition, he was caught coercing and threatening a witness in the said case. Public Safety Director Adam Abjetka was aware of this sexual misconduct and blocked an inquiry made by the prosecutor's office. He stated that it was not relevant to this case by which the inquiry was made. I brought this matter to the attention of the Cadillac Police and Marcus Petcha. I was informed by Detective Sergeant Chris Maslin that a criminal investigation would be opened up and conducted by the Michigan State Police. Upon contacting State Police Detective Matthew Wilt, I was informed that Director Abjetka and Officer Grum have been suspended during this criminal investigation. Any and all other attempts made by myself to inquire as to the nature and continuation of this investigation, or any investigation, have been blocked or suppressed, and I would like to make you all aware so that these people can be held accountable. Sexual predation and conspiracy to cover up crucial evidence is not conduct becoming any officer. I am a victim in the larger scope of this matter, but I believe that these actions by the Cadillac Police present a threat to the public. I have a copy of all of this evidence, including Officer Grum's testimony from the FOC case under oath, that I would like to give all of you so that you may review, and I would also like to take this time to ask Marcus Petcha, why aren't we talking about this? Why aren't you talking about this? This is a personnel issue, and I've tried to make contact with you. Yes?
Public comment is public comment.
Okay, fair enough.
Don't have conversation.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Already, well, then I'll just, I'll make that public. This is not being talked about. This is a criminal issue, this is more than just a personnel, you know, slip up. This is a criminal matter. I am not the only one that thinks so.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty. Can I hand these out to you guys now or later?
I can leave them with the clerk.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda, and this evening, we do have the minutes from the work session on March 20th, along with the regular meeting that was held on March 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allenbos?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. And that takes us to our public hearing for this evening. Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, we have one public hearing on your agenda. It is with respect to the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance that would amend the city's zoning map. I would like to introduce our Community Development Director, John Wallace, accordingly, to give everybody the background. Thank you. John?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I do have a PowerPoint to present on this case. And before I really get started, too, I just, I know there's been some comment about short-term rentals and discussion on social media and so forth, but in this particular case, we're talking about one rezoning and not an overall policy on short-term rentals. Essentially, this would potentially create one short-term rental for the community, which would have very little impact on the city as a whole with regard to, you know, future policies that will be forthcoming in a few months when we release the starting draft from the zoning ordinance, but with this potential case, I think there's very little potential for impact on that particular market. This rezoning application is to take property at 120 East Pine Street from an OS2, which is kind of a mixed-use residential business district, to the B2 district, and this is to allow the, to allow for a short-term rental in that particular zoning district. This is the home that we're talking about. It's the former home that was owned by Bob Levann, and at one point in time, he both resided at this home, and he also ran business operations out of this home. This map kind of shows the land uses, the subject site outlined in black. You can see it's surrounded by the yellow blocks, those are either single-family. Across the street from the use is a fourplex, and you can see the other red squares there are other commercial businesses that are located close to it. And of course, right next to the property, you have the bookstore, the booknook, located right next door to it. To give you a concept of what the land uses look adjacent to the use, you can see a residential home on the upper left, you can see the booknook on the right, the fourplex is in the bottom-left corner, and then across the street, there's also a public parking lot in close vicinity to this use. The zoning districts, these give you the zoning districts of the nearby parcels. They are B2, B3, RM4, or RM2, and you have the OS2, and what you can see is really rezoning this property, you have a B2 zoning directly next to it, and it's really just extending the B2 zoning one more lot. You would still have some OS2 zoning between the subject parcel and the next parcel across the street, moving up the block into the residential areas. And you can also see that you have a multifamily district on the next block over. So there's not a really big change in intensity of use for this area, and it is staying consistent with the other local zones. This is a shot that was used in the marketing. You can see that the house is kind of upscale from the average condition of houses within the neighborhood, which I think makes it particularly well-suited to be used as a short-term rental. The house has fountains, deck, landscaping, built-in pool, and the inside, too, is also upgraded to above what you would normally see in a, in a house for this neighborhood. The high quality and amenities found in this home, I think, make it particularly suitable to be used for short-term rental, and the existing OS2 zoning would not only allows for a single-family home, but would also allow uses such as offices, banks, personal service establishments, and multifamily development. So you can see the existing zoning also allows uses that are just as intense or more intense than the proposed use that would be for the use of the short-term rental. Given that Cadillac does not have a downtown hotel, short-term rentals are really the only opportunity people have to experience downtown Cadillac as a tourist. We did have several rooms in the former Herman's Restaurant, however, that property's in transition right now, and I don't believe those properties are available, and so in reality, if somebody wanted to come and stay in a non-area hotel, which is not located in the downtown, they would have virtually no options. So I think this would be at least one option for somebody to do that, enjoy our city, and do so more experiencing the vibe of the downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. I also think with the people that would be staying there, the expenditure levels for people staying at the short-term rental would also be spending higher amounts of money per capita in the downtown for the businesses. This rezoning request did meet all the considerations as contained in the zoning ordinance. Those standards were reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission wasn't unanimous, there was one vote opposing this recommendation to the council to approve, but the majority of the members were in favor of recommending to the council for the approval. I find that this application to place this property in the B2 zoning district equal to or better than that of the current designation as the OS2, I believe the proposed short-term rental use will be beneficial to the downtown, and I think the level of maintenance of this home is likely to be higher due to the short-term rental, when these are usually registered with Airbnb or some similar service. Both the tenant and the person leasing the property are both rated on that service, and there's built-in pressure to maintain those properties at higher level. As a redevelopment-ready community, one of our goals is to try to streamline the development and redevelopment review process. That's another reason why I think this is important, too, when you have people interested in doing redevelopment or upgrading services in your community, to try to handle that as fast as you're able to do so. Under the current draft of the zoning ordinance that is basically been written now and is just waiting, formatting, and graphic preparation, this use would be, is going to be proposed to be an acceptable use in that new zoning district. Now, of course, that hasn't been approved by the Planning Commission or the council, but at the current state, it would be an unchecked, short-term rental would be viable for the district that's planned in this area. And finally, just my recommendation would be to approve the rezoning of the parcel, and you can see the parcel number, which is 128 East Pine Street from OS2 Office Service District to the B2 Central Business District. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of this hearing, and same thing, if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk, it would be greatly appreciated, and then also, you have six minutes of comments during a public hearing, as long as we're not just repeating each other. That would be appreciated.
City Council, Randy. Just a few comments on what Mr. Wallace said about changing ordinance and that. Again, we find ourselves back again, we're tweaking ordinances to suit certain individuals, but you gotta remember, your set looks all nice and pretty, bright with lights, pretty nice swimming pool, et cetera. Is there any hotels downtown? No. Will it work out? The only thing I would be more concerned about is the multifamily use up behind the facilities and that. I know, hey, you come up for the summertime up in the area, whatever, or for whatever recreation you want to do, Airbnb would be nice. How long into the night are we going to party, have a good time, et cetera, et cetera. But again, we are tweaking ordinances for certain individuals, and I just want to say like such, we did that for the Northwood Hotel, we've done that for the Speeds Building, et cetera, and we've done that for many things, and they have not come to fruition, so... yeah, I think it will work, that'd be a nice spot, because you're a block away, but again, we're tweaking city ordinances, and I hope, hey, I got a house a block off Mitchell Street, too, that I would fit in that zoning, too, and I could Airbnb my house there, that would be a good thing.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public hearing.
All right, everybody, my name's Ben Dean, I live on Crosby Road. Let's write that down. City Council and Mayor Philkins, thanks for having us here tonight, and I want to speak. So a couple of comments on this house that we're asking to rezone. It was mentioned it was on the market for roughly half a year. I believe, in my opinion, that allowed the applicants to do diligence and vet out the zoning versus purchase the home, and then start renting it out, get caught, and then ask for a special exception to be made. I believe at one of the last meetings as well, Marcus Petcha mentioned that we're going to be going through a zoning reevaluation. My question is, why would we allow this case to proceed faster than others? I live in Cadillac, I own a home that's very nice as well, very nice construction, three-and-a-half acres, I could host people as well. I'm zoned R1, and I doubt we'd be allowed to do that. Speaking of R1, titty corner to that home on Shelby and Pine is R1 zoning, and I know a lot of people that come on short-term rentals will party and be up late and potentially drinking and all that, and R1 is the most protected zoning we have in Cadillac for our people, and so I ask, it's only like 60 foot away, where does this stop on the rezoning, and why would we not open it up to all of our residents, like myself over on Crosby Road, where I could rent it out? It'd be super beneficial. So, just some things to consider as you guys decide whether or not to approve this special case. Thank you.
As soon as I say it, somebody's going to stand up. All right, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and move to discussion of the council.
And I'm going to let you guys discuss, and I'll be quiet. Just frame of reference, this is, I think, the second time council has been asked to consider this type of request. The first time was out on Cadillac West in the resort area. Not that it matters, it's all, every section of town is different.
And the zone that we were dealing with in Cadillac West was tourist?
Tourist, recreational.
Mm-hmm.
Versus here, it's office and business.
Some of the concerns that were just raised by the last citizen who stood up were also relayed to me in three emails today, one of which by the Planning Commission, or who had voted no, an ex-councilperson and an owner of rental properties. And I do have a concern of the law of unintended consequence, that we have rules and we have zoning so that people have consistency, when they, when they buy in a certain zone, they know it's going to be allowed around them, and they should have confidence in that. Saying that zoning is living, again, it's something that changes depending on what's going on. One of my questions in trying to wrestle through this is, did we talk to the neighbors who are in the R1 area to get their feedback as to how they felt about this affecting their ability to have peaceful, quiet enjoyment?
Other than the public hearings, of course, everybody was invited, everybody was mailed notice to the meetings. I can't remember offhand. I don't think there was either no comment or very little comment at that public hearing, but no, we, and it's not routine practice to go out and talk to individual property owners in these rezonings, so it's, it's not a routine practice that we do, just for time limitation reasons.
What's the distance, though? The letters would have gone up?
Three hundred feet.
Yeah, and I understand it's not standard, but especially when we're going to change people's environments that they bought, knew the zoning, I think we have a duty to go above and beyond.
Well, keeping in mind that, you know, you do have the heavier zoning, just another few feet beyond this property, I didn't see it as a, as a big issue.
And I agree, in a lot of ways, it sounds good to me, but it's not up to me whether I like the idea or not. It's, does it follow our zoning? And are we requiring people to follow the same rules that we require in other areas? The point being, all right, if we're going to, on an ad hoc basis, allow this person to change, and he's in a close proximity, what about another developer that doesn't check our zoning first, buys an R1 house, starts operating VRBO on the internet and applies for, well, I'm, I'm right close to the next zoning, but I'm R1, I want the same type of consideration that we gave this one, and they were able to operate and, and do this, so I want to do that. It's just that law of unintended consequence that worries me, and the equal treatment of people saying, we have rules, we have to follow, these are our districts, this is what you do, buying, operating, and then fixing it. Those are my concerns.
I mean, in looking at this, I think, you know, this is a, is a good idea, this is a good plan, like that, it'd be nice if that house was an Airbnb. But, you know, I have, I know the city, they bought the house, they started running an Airbnb business, and we sent them, you know, a letter in January to stop doing that. When you check the Airbnb website, they continue to have reviews, you know, during February and March, you know, they ignored our letter. You know, they'll probably continue to ignore us even if we don't, you know, approve this. I do see this as kind of similar to, to the tourism district change that we made, maybe that one's a little bit of a shorter leap, going from a tourist part of town to an Airbnb versus a, you know, an office part of town, as, as you say, being able to predict what your neighbors will be based on the current zoning, it's not a big surprise when a tourist, you know, zone changes that way. I also think, and I brought this up last time, that we should, even if it's not a part separate from the master zoning plan, we need to, as we moved from one state government to a different state government, we need to come up with our policy at this point. We were on hold because it's going to be a lot of work, and we didn't want that to be for nothing if they, you know, pull our authority to regulate this type of thing. I know we all probably have a lot of thoughts on that, and, you know, speaking, speaking to yours, you know, the, the R1 district being as protected as it is may not ever see Airbnbs allowed through any type of process that we follow, you know, maybe it will. So I think, like I said, I'm having a hard time, because this, this is a, this is a good idea. This, this would be a good property, it would be good for downtown. All, everything John said is definitely true. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure, I guess, how I feel about this.
Thank you.
I would disagree that everything that John said is true. The idea that whoever's going to live there for the weekend or for however many days is going to take care of it as well as somebody that was renting it or owned it, we don't know that. We also don't know how many people are going to be renting that house. We've heard numbers, you know, 10, 12, 14 people, three families, it's a huge house. So you're looking at more than two or four people that are going to rent it, and the idea that they're going to be, you can't always count on people being respectful, they're here to have a good time, and we want people to come to Cadillac, but I'm not sure I would want to be living next to that, or the booknook, people parking in their parking lot, and the fact that they're doing this after the fact. They got caught, and now we're supposed to change the rules for them? I, I don't like that. I don't like it a bit. I wish I could vote yes, but I'm telling you right now, I'll be voting no. I don't like the whole situation. If they would have been at the right way, filed the paperwork, got ahold of us, instead of doing an end run, we'll work with you, but this, you don't deserve anything from Cat City Cadillac, as far as I'm concerned. That's what I got to say. That's all.
Thank you. What do you think?
It's such a pickle. I am absolutely, first of all, the people who stay at short-term rentals are not responsible for maintaining them, it's, it's the owners that do, and... for maintaining them, it's, it's the owners that do, and they have to remain up to snuff in order to get the ratings to get people to come. So I'm not concerned about maintenance. Um, I'm not even concerned about misbehavior, because we have ordinances to address all of that, and we can do that. Um, I am very unhappy with the fact that they continue to run an illegal operation in the city, and, um, is there, is, is there any, um, form of recourse for that, even if we do approve of it now, for where, for the time that they were in violation? Are there any kinds of, um, are there any kinds of consequences for being in violation for, after they've received a letter to stop?
There might be municipal civil type infraction, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, and we would need legal to, to look at that, to see if there is.
Yeah, it would be as of the date, if we had proof that there were, um, unlawful renters to rentals during the timeframe in which they were not, didn't have proper permitting, or didn't have proper approvals from the, from the city to, to rent during that time. Municipal civil infraction is usually issued effective a specific date of an incident, so, um, a municipal civil infraction could be cited later on for action that was taken prior to the, uh, you know, approval of the rezoning, if that was what council would do.
And would, like, online reviews via Airbnb, or, or booking records via Airbnb be sufficient evidence to pursue that?
It would certainly be helpful, yes. If we had, um, you know, an affidavit or other, um, you know, testimony from a renter, or a potential rental agreement, that would also be helpful. But the standard of review for a municipal civil infraction is a proponent of the evidence, so it's not like a criminal matter where you have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt, so the standard is a little bit lower than we would normally, um, you know, have to prove for that kind of a violation. Uh, but certainly all that information would be helpful to substantiate a violation.
I, I agree with that, I'm sorry.
Um, you know, going back to the statement that you made about, you know, the law of un, unintended consequences, there are a lot of Airbnbs in Cadillac. We're talking about one of them. And so, you know, if we're talking about that in relation to this incident, then other people who are unknowingly or knowingly, and they've been doing it for a long time, renting properties on Airbnb or VRBO, um, then we should be having that same discussion about all of those people. I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Ingles, that I think this is a great use of this property. But I also agree with the, um, with the perception of carving out for individuals. When is it that we're gonna be addressing this ordinance?
The draft of the ordinance is complete right now. Um, I was informed that the MUNICODE people would need two to three months for formatting the ordinance, and there's probably about another week or so left in preparing the final graphics. The text of the document is complete right now, and so it's just a question of a week or so and final graphics, and those could be done, uh, while they start formatting the, uh, the code through MUNICODE. But since we use them as an online service, that seems to be the way to go.
So I think the, the more clearer picture would be late spring, early summer, would probably be when we're gonna start rolling this all out, uh, for public forums and public hearings and bringing it to the council.
Well, you know, when we had, when we had talked about this before, you know, it was being held up at the state, because the state wanted to be able to say what we were gonna do with our property here in Cadillac, and I don't think any of us want the state telling us what we can do with our property here in Cadillac. We should be able to manage that. And so, you know, I think the decision here tonight is, do we carve out just one more before we are able to address this ordinance? Or do we wait for this ordinance, and everybody comes in at the same time?
Yeah, I think, you know, I stated several concerns, but like, um, Councilmember Shippers would say, was saying, uh, that before, I think, after hearing this, before I think I'd be able to, to vote yes, they, I mean, we have to have a discussion or implementation of, you know, enforcing the ordinance. Um, you know, this, you know, this is the list of Airbnbs, you know, in, in Cadillac for rent, you know, some of these are probably in the R1 district. Um, and I, you know, the, the type of, and, and I know we're talking about switching from OS, not, not residential, but still, it's, the, the message we're gonna be sending is gonna be a mixed one, and I'd rather it not be, I think. So I would like to have a, I mean, a, either, you know, a discussion about enforcing this, you know, finding, I know Mike, um, sometimes looks at these websites, I know this Airbnb got a letter in January, you know, we can only, we only have so many staff, we can only scour the internet for so long looking for these things. But maybe we need to be a little bit more consistent and actually, um, have consequences attached to breaking our ordinances.
Have, do you know if there have been any other, um, of these that have gotten cease and desist letters?
In the past, there have been, um, complaint-driven. I'd get a call from somebody in the council, or from a neighbor, hey, can you look into this, there's what appears to be an Airbnb. Um, we sent a letter, and then it stops, so. We have not had to issue any kind of citation or, or ticket, if you will, in the past, so.
Okay, but these folks didn't stop, apparently.
Apparently. I, I, honestly, I don't know factually one way or another, they have or not, I'm only hearing what is being talked about, so.
Right.
I also feel like, you know, the more I think about it as, as a level of importance, this is a little different than people not cutting their grass. Um, this is the type of, you know, when people haven't abandoned vehicles in their yard, this is the type of thing where, if you let this go, it can destroy your town quicker and in a different way.
That's right.
You know, that you can't get back to, by cleaning up some vehicles and cleaning up some yards, so.
That's right. We've seen it in neighboring communities, where suddenly, you know, it's, there's no housing for people who live in the community, it becomes unaffordable for those who work in the community. We gotta get on this ordinance, um, we gotta get on this, um, policy quickly. Um, that being said, once again, I think this is a, this, it, it, it's maddening that they blatantly continue to violate it, and that this could be seen as rewarding bad behavior. Um, I, I don't see it that way, I would like to pursue the violation. Um, but I would also think that an adjacent, a property adjacent to downtown, um, not in an R1 zoning already, I think it's a, I think that's an easy transition. Is this, this is, this is, this is tough. Can Marcus say something?
Absolutely.
As City Council continues to discuss and debate, if it isn't in your line of thinking as, as potential options, um, in terms of what you do tonight, if one makes an assumption that the draft that, of the zoning code, which obviously is gonna include more than just this topic, but as a part of that zoning code rewrite that we're required to do, um, identifies the B2 district as a district that is allowed for this use, even if council should decide that this evening, you're not in a place to move this item forward, over time, through the passage of the updated zoning code, it would be a use allowed by right. So, ultimately, if I'm saying that right, maybe not allowed by right, I don't know.
Well, I, I think right now isn't, BS2 requires a special use permit, doesn't it, John?
That sounds like a great.
The new ordinance is gonna change all the descriptors for the zoning code, that we won't be using B1, B2, and all of that. Uh, there'll be two downtown districts, downtown core and downtown, this would fall within the downtown district, and there is identified uses, and, and the short-term rental would be permitted by right at this location. If, if we did it that way. Right, right. It also make it a special use. Right.
But I think council understands the path I was going, in terms of just trying to help with your conversation tonight, doesn't necessarily end tonight.
And that's why, I guess I feel like, after all this, for me, that I would have to vote no, until there was a, um, a solution for the enforcement, you know, for this property specifically, but also for any other properties that are in violation.
If, if it helps, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we not approve the zoning change, understanding that we're looking at revamping our ordinance and deal with it appropriately when we do that.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Wow, that's a change from what I was thinking coming in.
Well, another thing too, mayor and members of council, when council did authorize this use on the west side, we were a lot further out also from having the updated zoning code coming to you for consideration, or going through the public process for consideration, so.
And there, were there any houses by that, that change, are there, were there any actual residences?
Yes.
I think there were, yeah. Yeah, there were. So, you know, this will delay, but perhaps not completely kill the item.
Okay. Good discussion. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, okay, a few items under the manager's report this evening. Uh, first one is a request to schedule our public hearing for April 17th to consider the approval of the fiscal year 24 through 29 capital improvement program.
I'd make a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 17th, 2023, to consider approval of the fiscal year 2024 to 2029 capital improvement program.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the next item is very similar, uh, request to schedule the, uh, public hearing for April 17th, 2023, to discuss the fiscal year 24 annual operating budget.
I'll make that motion to schedule a public hearing for April 17th, 2023, to discuss the 2023-24 annual operating budget.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, this next item is with regard to an applicator bid for the Lake Cadillac Aquatic Plant Herbicide Treatments. We did receive, uh, one bid from PLM Land and Lake Management of Everett, Michigan. Uh, we have been using them, I believe, since the early 2000s, uh, 2006, actually. Uh, and it is recommended that council award this contract for aquatic plant herbicide treatments to PLM Land and Lake Management out of Everett, Michigan. Uh, the contract would automatically renew in one-year increments, uh, and upon the recommendation of our lake consultant and approval of the city, there would be annual adjustments in the respective unit prices, uh, for ensuring that seasons don't exceed a 2% uh, adjustment annually. We do have funds available in the lake treatment fund, and it's a situation where they go out, uh, and spot-check using GPS markers where treatments occur, so the fluctuation of treatments will adjust based upon the demand of the, of the lake, so.
Do we need a not to exceed in this?
I don't know, I don't think so, but.
I, I don't even know where to set that, to be honest with you, because they would have to, no, no, they're, so they didn't put in, we didn't ask for that in the, um, in the RFP, we just simply had, had them put in their unit costs, and so if there were multiple bids, then we could've at least compared them, the unit costs. So, I guess I would hate to, to, you know, set a, set a random cap, and then we had a situation like last year. Um, certainly, you know, our budget that we're appropriating is $50,000. So if it goes over that, we would have to come back to council then and say, our treatment costs are gonna exceed the budget.
That answers the question right there.
Yeah, so that's, that's a natural cap, is the appropriation.
Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for aquatic plant herbicide treatment to PLM Land and Lake Management of Everett, Michigan.
I'll second that.
Councilmember, or Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, um, mayor and members of the city council. Uh, this next item is a resolution regarding, uh, city event policy, specifically for events in Cadillac Commons. It's something that off and on, um, I've been, uh, talking about for, for quite some time, and after our event season last year, we had received quite a number of complaints about having the city park, that's where the Memorial Fountain is located, being used essentially, uh, every single weekend, um, uh, and taking away that park space from the ability for people, frankly, just to enjoy the open space, whether they're there to take pictures, uh, have a picnic, uh, maybe even have a, a, you know, sort of an impromptu wedding ceremony, it, it took away that space for use. And so the, the policy before you this evening, uh, basically, in a nutshell, would prohibit the ability for that park space to be used more than a couple of times consecutively, and really reallocates the use of that space, uh, or I should say, reallocates users that need to have reoccurring space to use facilities, whether the facilities of the Rotary Pavilion, or the, the Market at Cadillac Commons, or even other places around the city. Um, we would administratively redirect folks to use those other, those other spaces. Um, at a later point in time, we're, we're also looking at implementing a more formal mechanism with respect to our fees currently, uh, they are set administratively, and we're looking at adopting them by ordinance, we just didn't have that ordinance ready to introduce at the meeting this evening. Uh, but the fees themselves haven't changed from the where, where they've been set the last couple of, uh, couple of years, and all that this policy does is really clarify that recurring uses shouldn't be occurring either on the plaza or on the, um, in the city park every weekend in a row, so.
I like having this all in writing, so that there's no question, um, good policy makes for, good things for everybody, so I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the event policy.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to our last public comment for this evening.
You told me I couldn't. I'm Bob Durant, I live in Cadillac, mayor, councilmembers. Uh, Mr. Wallace was saying about, uh, Airbnbs and all those, uh, the ones I've worked in are well, better maintained than rental houses, cause a lot of the rental houses don't have to go by the same rules. If somebody moves into a rental house, and you wanna kick them out of that rental house, you have to go through the court system. With an Airbnb, you call the Airbnb company, and the police can do this, and have the people removed that day, the same as a motel. They don't have the rights that a renter does. If somebody wants to buy a house, park a travel trailer in their front yard, just cause you don't like it, if it's a rental house, you can't do anything about it. If it's an Airbnb, the owner can. But they're just better maintained, they're cleaned on weekly basics, ba- basically, if that's how often the people are in and out, and it does bring a lot of people to Cadillac, looking at jobs, looking at houses that they wanna buy to move to the area, and I'm just saying, the ones I've worked in are well-maintained, well-taken care of, and they're not allowed to let the yards get all nasty, overgrown, junk vehicles, you know, stuff like that. And it does open up an easier path for the police to do something about mischief. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now you all know what I mentioned earlier, that in this city, there are police officers running around, pointing their guns, creating situations and disrupting severely, destroying people's lives to insert their, their genitals into somebody that they want to. This is absolutely insane and no one's talking about it. No one will talk to me about it. I've tried to go through the proper channels, I've tried to notify the correct people and it is moving along. I'm coming here and notifying you as a courtesy so that you may have an opportunity to get in front of this and hold these people accountable. I know this is a public comment and you're probably just going to keep on staring at me, but I'm asking you to set aside procedure and tell me, please, respectfully, are you even willing to do something about this? Your, your police officers are criminals. And then on top of that, the public safety director is hiding it. He's suppressing it. He's blocking the county prosecutor from looking into this. And then he stops too. Where does this end? This is not going to be another Anthony Wolfe who rapes his wife and gets reinstated as a fire marshal, nor Officer Rourke that has sexual relations with, with other officers or any of our numerous officers that have DUIs that apparently are above the law, the real sovereign citizens. So I'm asking you, listen to what I'm saying, set aside procedure for one moment and please let me know if, if you're going to do something about this. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, it's been a tough meeting. Of the upcoming, I'm not going to get too carried away here, I'll just go. Our finance director is approval for the capital improvements coming up at us, et cetera. Keep our taxpayers in mind, residential, you know, the, the citizens deserve more equality too, also into the city, you know? Even from, again, I'm going to emphasize, from just even sidewalks, no plowing. You know, we used to do leaf pickup all through town and I'm still trying to figure out how to pick up a pile, a round pile of leaves and put them in a square bag, but anyways, that's the, but again, uh, what do we got? The annual operating budget, et cetera, et cetera. Then we allocated the herbicidal treatment for the lakes. I don't know, a lot of you guys are aware of what is happening to the lakes, especially around Lake Mitchell. The sewage has continued to leak, uh, it's like going to be over a $20 million job project and nobody can even touch it right now. And that flows in the Mitchell, Mitchell and the canal, canal and the Lake Cadillac, et cetera. So anyways, along with that, uh, no, I'm not gonna, I just want to mention about, uh, personal use vehicles coming up and budgeted, such as for the city manager coming and the next physical budget, capital funding, et cetera. What is, uh, the citizens need to come first in the city Cadillac. We pay your wages and we would appreciate the services. Oh yeah, this is kind of a tough, tough time right now, but, and I want to apologize to this gentleman. If, if things were going orderly on his Airbnb and he wasn't violating, I think it would have been a good thing for, you know, it's to block off Main Street, what the hell, you know, excuse me. But it, it would have worked. It would have worked out. And like you say, it's a short term and what that other gentleman said about how strict Airbnbs are, they are, so. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order, should anyone have anything.
I just wanted to say, you know, to Bob and to Randy, I definitely support Airbnbs in this town. I hope that property becomes one. I hope we have several Airbnbs coming in. I think that'd be great for, you know, taking care of properties for, you know, for the town, for tourism. I think I had different problems with how we were going to do this one. You know, number one being that they violated our ordinances and the message that that would send. So I do hope that that property does become an Airbnb. I, I def, I sincerely hope that.
Okay, so I have a couple of things for good of the order. First of all, this Saturday at Elk, starting at 7:00 PM is the Gopher Wood Annual Benefit. And one of the artists is right in the audience this evening. Adam Joint is going to be playing Frank Youngman. There will be multiple musicians donating their, their talents for music. And there will also be a silent auction in which we'll be auctioning some stuff, but also some experiences, events, things like that. So 7 o'clock, it's a, I believe it's a $20 ticket. And then it supports, what it does is it supports live music in the community all year long. So come on out, it's also a really good time, it's lots of fun. The other thing is on Sunday, the 23rd of April, is going to be the Cadillac Earth Day Celebration. And this year, the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council is spearheading the, the project. So we're really excited, we're getting lots of youth involved with it this year and into perpetuity. So come out for that. That is all.
My turn? I'll take one of those folders on the way out, not now. Silly me, but I thought that it was innocent until proven guilty. So you'll have your day in a court of law and I would suggest you save your theatrics for the court because it doesn't fly real good here. Okay? But I'll be glad to take one and I'll check it out. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, nothing else, we'll go ahead and it's your. Thank you.